I thought I'll do it.
Yeah, it works fine.
Right?
Yeah.
Call the word. Although. Evening, everybody. We're gonna have a. Public hearing except some funds at five o'clock. Uh, signage for holder. We had one item. Signed for a library lot that's there on loan to the town. Three of them. So basically they have the serial numbers and everything else. Standard stuff. We will have a manifest dated August twenty nine, twenty twenty four, and the amount of ninety eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty nine dollars and thirty eight cents. I made a motion.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Bye.
I understand.
Manifest dated September fifth, twenty twenty four, and the amount of twenty six thousand, five hundred and eighty five hours and sixty seven cents. I made a motion.
Sorry.
Favor.
Aye. Aye.
Make a motion to select the board of select and administrative August twenty 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 four.
Okay.
All favor.
Aye.
Uh, review and mail, none. Just in time, I assume.
Justin.
Uh, Patrick.
Yes.
Ah.
Wow, this time is unbelievable.
Parking is a trick out there, huh?
We usually get that much of crowds. Um. I'll let you go ahead and explain the truth.
Sure. Um, my name's Patrick Hathley. I'm the director for the Division of Forests and Lands, the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. And um, so we manage uh, all the state lands uh, for the most part. E O T has some land, but our, our department manages land from. From Brooklyn up to Pittsburgh, um, about two hundred and ninety thousand acres. And we manage the Epon Bog Forest right here. In town, actually, in Ospey, next door. I'm here tonight to talk about a, a small parcel, small relative to the size of the state forest, with about eighty eight acres. Um, the family is looking to sell it and they'd like to see if the state would be willing to acquire it. To add it to the Epon Bog Forest. Um. So we're working with another conservation group that's helping us um. Raise funds and manage the uh, potential for us to acquire it so we can. Add it to the state forests.
Can I interrupt you? So is that eight uh, acres in Ospey or?
It's in Effingham.
Yeah, just right on the bound.
Right on the boundary, yeah, yeah. Um. So um, I, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Epon Bog Forest, but it's, it's unique, there's a lot of rare, rare nature plants.
See it under that.
Yeah. Let's see. Oh gosh, okay. Well, this, you're not gonna see it from there anyway, but it's, it's not far, it's, it, it borders the tributary, actually is the Pine River that flows into Ospey Lake. Um, it's a beautiful place, it's, it's a rolling topography. Um, it does have uh, trails, they're really skid trails that are healing over now, but it's very accessible, very walkable. It does have frontage on a town maintained road. I, I didn't check that. This is the Nud track, this is the Nud family track. I didn't check the name of the road.
Green Mountain.
Is it Green Mountain Road, okay? So it's just a dog leg that sticks out. Um, yeah, you wanna pass around that map, we can just take a look at. Another map here. And did uh. Did my partner, my conservation partner send you folks a map in advance? You have it, good, okay, great. Um. So this land is in current use. At the moment, it would stay in current use, so the tax situation would not change. The state um, has uh, what we call payment in lieu of taxes for state land. And that uh, is about a hundred percent current use tax value, so it's the same, basically the same tax rate as um. What the current use uh, classifications are. Um. So we, we don't, we don't buy land lightly, this is something that uh, again, the owners came to us, the broker representing the. The owners came to us and said that if, 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 if they could see it be conserved, that's, that would be their desired outcome. So they came to us first, it's taken us a while, it takes us a while to identify funds. Um, but working with our friends at Conservation Fund. Um, we think we might be able to have a deal by the first quarter of twenty twenty five. And then it would be added on to the surrounding. Um, Epon Bog Natural Area. Uh, so that's uh, thirteen hundred and sixty nine acres. Would be adding on this little eighty acre piece. And um. It would provide another place to access Pine River. Although it'd be a little bit of a walk from Green Mountain Road. So that's basically why I'm here tonight is to seek, uh, well, first to, to answer any questions you might have. And to seek support from the town, if they would be um. Willing to uh, lend their support for the state to acquire the parcel. Um, obviously, it's a private transaction with a private landowner. But because we're applying for federal funds. It helps to have the support of the townsfolk to know that. It's something that uh, they feel is appropriate for the town's use, it would be open, of course. Uh, recreation, hunting, fishing. Uh, et cetera, so. Same as the state forests.
Okay.
Do you got a question? Just. The types of soils and things like that, it's, uh, good fortune, I'm pretty sure I'm familiar with it, is, is wet, correct?
Yeah, there's some forested wetland down there, they're actually, it fronts a wetland. Um, it was logged in the winter time, probably about a year ago, you folks might know when the activity was there. Um, but the trail itself is, is in good shape, very walkable. I walked it when it was uh, late March, and so it was sort of that time of year where. You think you can get away without snowshoes, and then you go without snowshoes and you break through the crust. Um, so I didn't get to see them bare ground conditions, but I think you're right, there's some hummocks and hollows where the water stands. So it's, as far as development value. You know, you, there's probably development value in the frontage, but as the farther back you get, the wetter it gets.
You know the exact frontage on the town roof?
I don't have that, that number.
It's just a, it is just a narrow.
It is, it is, there's a, there is a shed on that uh, that little dog leg that goes to the road. So. Um. Yeah, we did have it appraised, and so that's part of getting federal monies, you have to have it appraised. Um. And we think it's uh, something we can pull off, it's, we're slow moving, the state, but we think it's um, a transaction that we can make happen and add a little bit more to the state forests. And, and kind of preserve the rural character of your town.
You might find a look at your colored map.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, so there's all kinds of uh, rare plants. On the property, these, these are some of the labels.
Yeah.
Yeah, here's another map, you guys want that? Yeah, so you can see it makes a nice, it's kind of a nice piece of the puzzle for a state forest.
That's actually Pine River Road.
Pine River Road, I said it was Green Mountain Road, Pine River.
Yes, I was looking at this, but.
So you know what a sign shop is in Pine River Road? Yeah, it's right next to the sign shop, just to the right on Sign Shop, if you're looking at the drive. That little shed, when I was a kid.
Is that that shed along the road?
Yep, that was a snow machine repair shop.
Is that right?
That's probably.
So that's all we built there.
Uh. Somebody wants to collect some. Yeah, the first one. Isn't that what they claim to Ospey, the town of Ospey is?
Yeah.
Um.
They used to be part of Palmer's properties. It was a slot man in this town for many.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
I know where it is.
We're toward it, my nuts. Correct.
Nug, yeah. Thank you, I can send you all more maps, more color. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, wonderful, yeah. Well, we have a, a form letter that, I don't know if my partner sent it already, but if, if you're open to um. If you're open to supporting the state's acquisition of the parcel. Um. We have a digital version you can look at, and that kind of.
Read it aside.
Kind of have to update the data on it, that has a temporary date of August.
But we can make.
Can you take a picture on it? It would help. And then we just send them.
Did she say the Microsoft Word version of it?
Yeah.
Oh, she had one or two.
So um, do we have any public input?
No, it's free.
You still want? Go ahead and make one.
Make a motion before the project would, inside this letter and send it over. To the, Mr. Hathley. I'll second that one.
All favor.
Aye.
Nice.
Awesome, thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
You bet, uh, we'll keep you posted on the transaction, it's, like I said, we're, takes us a while, we've a lot of steps to make, but um, we're confident we can. Bring into state ownership and have it, uh, more land available to the public.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So it's a pretty easy process, just remember that, if we ever need anything from you, okay?
Alright, you're gonna hold me to that. I owe you one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, take care.
Alright, uh. Welcome, selection reports.
My TV, nothing, I was on vacation.
Okay. Chris?
So as I alluded to earlier, we got a couple of small pavement projects need to be addressed, um, there was a cross pipe, a culvert that had failed on High Watch Road, the need to be paved in. And a larger, uh, was identified by a contractor, a larger than normal uh. Hole on, it's a shallow, what they call a shallow hole, a single layer hole. Coal patch doesn't hold up, the traffic just beats it out again on High Watch Road, um. So I was thinking at the same time, uh, do those two things. And possibly do a hot patch on a series of potholes on. Pine River that continuously get pounded out. Um, just a small section, well, I say small section, the narrow section, but it's probably a hundred feet long. And repairing a paved swale, um, so it stops an erosion issue that we have continuing on town. Um. And you have a couple of phone calls out there, um. Paying companies to get pricing and availability and stuff like that, if you. Gentlemen, still support that, please support that.
Yeah, so, so, please.
And um. Grading, some grading is um. Been performed by the contractor, um. Buck Road was graded. Um, some washouts, country's big road was graded again. Um, so with the grading. It's kind of late here, it's September, calcium chloride application.
Yeah.
No, okay, I was of the same opinion. So hopefully we won't get any complaints and hopefully the roads hold up, if Mother Nature cooperates and doesn't give us pounding rain.
Everybody's got a lot of hope.
Yep, um, some of the piles that were picked up from the ditching material, um, when the grader goes around and pulls up the material and. Um, not to beat a dead horse, but when you see those piles on the side of the dirt roads. Uh, sticks, branches, leaves. Um, sometimes trash, they fall in the ditches, you can't grade that in in rocks. They, you can't grade that into the roadbed, um, because it creates more bumps, uh. And they, it, it creates a bump, creates a hole or a bump. Um, so what is often done when that happens is it gets collected by the grader blade and pushed off into an area. And that's the piles that everybody sees in the dirt roads, so the contractor went around, uh, they usually. Reserve rainy days to do that, I don't blame them, it's a good thing to do, guy can stay in the machine, guy can stay in the truck, and some of the piles were picked up. Um. I know Morty Road was picked up, Nud Road. Nutter Road was picked up, still stuck on Nud. Um, Nutter Road was picked up the other day. And the uh, petter rocks were picked up and put in place around the culvert at forty three Old Pile Road. Um, that was something that we wanted to get done, and we had the lock issue with uh. The contractor when he was doing that ditch work, so that ditch has been cleaned up again because it did erode around that culvert at number forty three to the point where the gentleman couldn't get his nail. Um. There was a huge trench, um, so hopefully this takes care of it, I'll continue to monitor it, but again. Um, Mr. McColski did a great job there. And uh, he used three pieces of granite that was in our stockpile at the transfer station. So. That's all I have as usual, unless I think of something else, which I usually do.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
My case, uh. We uh, had to call the Bieber guy, uh, on the Turd Brook down from Libby. You know, on Townhouse Road, it was. About a foot less from the top of a, a road, and that's three foot culvert, so the Beavers were in there. Um. Got a whole evidence. And he cleaned it out to open it up, and then uh, Mike, the guy for the Beavers, he came in with his traps, and he took one out, but today he pulled the traps. Last four days, nothing. So. I did make a, a B-Break gate. Because we never had one there before, so like donated it, personal stuff, so. You know, it covers a whole uh.
Culvert?
Uh, no. Anyway, covers all culvert, so we should not have a problem in the future, and if we do, we can pull the gate up and clean it and stuff like that, so. Otherwise, um, pretty much I was in most of my stuff, what I do when it was. Catering itself. Anyway. Alright, so next department, uh, where are we going? Hey, bud, please.
Alright, um, so I had sent out budget sheets about two weeks ago, through department boards and um. Our boards and department heads, they're due back on September twenty seventh, and with them, I attached the budget schedule, so to where. What date meeting is for the Selectment and Budget Committee. I attended NHMA's Navigating Taxi Traps webinar hosted by um, New Hampshire Taxi and Property Auctions, also Sager Smith of Ospey. Um, JP Pest came in today, and they noticed that the door in the modular outback, the door sweep is bent and is leaving a gap allowing entry for pests. They did.
Of pests.
Uh, amounts. So.
I haven't seen any mites.
It, there was one located, or at least. Evidence of one, so it's this door right back here, I don't know if, he said it's mentally might go and bend it back.
This one here?
Yeah, this back one right here.
Okay, okay.
Uh, where am I? Remoting Treatment Center had sent in payments for delinquent bills, it was two hundred thirty two thousand, four hundred fifty eight dollars, maybe three cents in taxes. And fourteen thousand, six dollars and ninety eight cents for their service ambulance bills.
Smile, David.
Um. I want to schedule a second work session for the personnel policy before we go to any finalization, make sure everything's good and bring up any additional items that um, we may have. And for the archive for Selectment Minutes, the file names are currently being renamed, so that way when it goes on a Google Drive, they're easier to locate. And they're also being converted to PDF, these are the older ones that, you know, were before. Anything else. Um, so that should be on by Thursday. Last but not least, the. Grant for Wilkinson Swamp has finally been completed, I finally got the, it's all set. So we should be receiving payment for that, I believe it's roughly twelve thousand dollars of a payment that we will need, and once that check comes in, we'll hold another public hearing.
Um, question on the ballot, you will put that on a sample ballot on.
Yep, Andrew was talking about it, and I'll have that on there tomorrow.
You can access.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it.
That's it.
Thank you. Keith? Now you first.
Okay.
You're a.
I was supposed to be a journey, so I came online.
Thank you.
Pretty regular, I guess, twenty seven calls for the month, free calls at Green Mountain Treatment Center. Um, our trend continues, we had eight calls or thirty percent during our daytime coverage hours, and nineteen of those calls happened outside of our daytime coverage. So seventy percent of our calls in August happened when there was no cover done.
Is there a trend in this, like in the time period for those after hours calls, like midnight, early evening?
So. Uh, the last page of the breakdown by um, time block. And it looks like our busiest time is from noon time to four P M.
It looks like uh, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
And yeah. Thursday, Friday, Saturday are busiest days of the week. With that being said, um, starting September first, I have implemented a trial on our daytime coverage. Um, the days of the week are down to eight hour trips instead of the ten hour shifts, and I'm adding on a Saturday coverage option as well for one person. So with the hours we're saving during the week going down to eight hours, we can afford to put an eight hour person on on Saturday.
So let your shit, during the day and.
Nine to five.
Nine to five. Okay.
I think that'll cover those late afternoon calls, with more people around in the morning, but you know, the volunteers are still home in the morning typically, so.
Good.
We're gonna try it out and see how it works, um, I. I think this trend is a summer thing, and I think as the weather gets colder and the tourism goes away, we'll go back to kind of our normal, most of the calls are happening weekdays during the day, so. We'll continue to monitor this and change as needed. Uh, didn't really have any noteworthy calls, um, we did go mutually quite a bit, we went to Parsons Field three, four times. And that is part of what they, what they pass for over here.
You've seen any difference in the trend, is it, we average about the same amount of calls every year from mutual.
No, it's, it's been higher this year, um, I think they're starting to remember to actually call us. Uh, the amount of calls in the, in the area, I think, has stayed about the same, but historically we weren't being called. So I think they've started to call us more, they're driving by and seeing cars there and things like that, so they're tending to call us more often.
I don't want to sound greedy, the reason why I ask is if there's an influx of calls, like there is nationwide, that figure that. They've been giving us for some of the years hasn't ever been adjusted.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should monitor it moving forward and, you know.
If it's a trend.
Keep an eye on the number, and if it is trending up, then we should have that conversation. But I don't think we have good enough data historically to tell at this point.
Wow, a lot of data.
Friday, we did have a fairly significant unpermitted burn that kind of turned into a wildland situation, um. Person on Rufus Mountain Road called in saying, hey, I'm looking out my back window and the side of Green Mountain's on fire. So that got our hearts racing a little bit, um, we ended up going up to the end of Hobbs Road, and one of the houses on Hobbs Road, we found it at the very top. And um, they started a small brush pile in their yard, and it extended into a recently logged area. So it caught their log piles on fire as well, so. We were there for quite a while, Friday evening into the late night, and back again Saturday morning for a few hours, putting that out.
So this was in their backyard, they started to fire.
This was in their backyard, yeah, they were trying to burn a small pile of brush, and that extended into their larger yard.
No.
So plug there.
With these last house.
No.
There's a house.
Yeah, it used to be Brian.
Yeah, it's a relatively new to town couple, so um, it wa, it was not in, you know, intentional type of thing, it was purely accidental, but.
They have a permit?
They did not have a permit, so some education has occurred, and I actually just left there as well, running late, so Forest Ranger came out. But plugged to the, to the people in town, you know, this, this is why we ask you to get your permits and follow the burning laws and, and don't be burning things that are too big or unsafe, so.
Any questions from the public? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I just copied it in front of anybody who would like any. Uh, August, again, busy month for us, three hundred and eighty four calls for service. One arrest, forty seven motor vehicle stops, one motor vehicle accident, the K nine was voided out three times. Two for demos, one for the street fair, one was for the Freedom Multi-Mate and the Firefighter Day. They asked us to come over again this year. And uh, one was a K nine services, which was for a uh. Abandoned vehicle, which is, uh, ended up resulting in the arrest of someone for. Uh, operating under the influence. Uh, just some notes on the bottom through last year, through August of last year, there was two thousand, four hundred and seven calls for service. Through this year, we've handled up to date three thousand and thirty five calls for service. Last year in August, we only handled two hundred and eighty one calls. So our uh, trend is still going, we're up six hundred and twenty eight calls so far, and just a little note at the bottom. Our total calls for two thousand and twenty three last year was three thousand, four hundred and twenty two. So we're. Less than four hundred calls away from where we were at the end of last year, and we aren't even through September yet. So we are just continuing to, to go up, this month was a really busy month for us as far as. Some in-depth investigation and reports which tied us again to the PD a lot, and spent a lot of time in there. You know, typing and making phone calls and gathering paperwork and. Yeah, we have some that are rolling over now that we're trying to, you know, get caught up on now that we're starting to go into the fall season. Trying to wrap up some of those. So. Any questions on this?
So I got a question.
Yeah.
Now, hold on a minute, JT, I want to take a minute.
Uh huh.
You?
Our software is completely different.
So our, our software that we use is the entire county. So when I run these, I act, I have to go in. I have to select every, basically every box is its own thing, and I have to sift through. Well, I can select Effingham, but when the computer generates it, it takes all of, all the other calls that month. And weeds them out, and it takes me twenty, twenty five minutes to do this, because I'm, we're sifting through the whole county. Uh. I wish we had something like that, but that's. So. When we originally looked at that package. Um, in the discussion I had with Ian, with the company. If we have a report or map that we would like. They'll actually build it for us, a chart is for it, but it's a one-time chart, it will build, all you have to do is win two of the day range, hit a button, and it will produce a report. I can, I can talk. Find out if the county guy has, the tech guy has actually done that. Because he would do something to the company, to the company.
Right.
I can go through right now and kind of create one on my own, but I'll talk to uh, talk to Justin. If you want the preformat, because the, the, the time we looked at it, it was a couple hundred bucks to build the report.
Right.
Like a half an hour to build it.
Right.
But then it's a permanent report template for you, you just go in and. Click it and then it'll print it.
Yeah, you guys should see all that.
Yeah.
Great data.
As far as like, if we were to generate, I could generate like a crime report, which is like, if we often make a call from the county, if we enter our own like narrative or pull a report number, I can generate a crime report that way, but a lot of that. Information can't be disseminated until the investigations goes anyway.
Yeah, I mean, you know. Or should be similar to what JT has, you know, showing how many hours were all, the majority of the calls are timelines and all that stuff.
I can, I can, I can try, but. I did, I'll find out if we can. Find out when you talk to the, the county tax. There's gotta be some of the towns and cities who are in the same, within the county, using the same software package to get the reporting you are. There's gotta be some preformant report. That somebody has already built or had requested, it might be available, so you don't, I mean, they don't even, you get active.
I'll read, I'll send out a email to all the county chiefs and ask them. You know, what they're using for.
Do they have a preformatting reports on that system? Both in there for data. I, I think to get a picture of the amount of hours that go into some of these things. You, we would never, certainly month to month, get a clear picture, because these things, some cases get tied up into the court, you never know when that's gonna take place. Um. It's not, not to take anything away from the fire department, if they had to do like the fire investigation, that would take copious amounts of hours, if there was an arson, things like that, so.
I've been looking for it just a demo.
Hmm. And as far as like our follow-ups, like we're making phone calls, we don't always love those, like hours that we're in typing, none of that's really put on paper. There's no way you'll play. Take a break.
It says, I'm likely to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September twenty-four, five o'clock P M, sixty, Swoon Street. As prescribed by RSA thirty-one call ninety-five dash B, section three. For the purpose of assessing funds from Eff- Effing Preservation Society in the amount of fifteen thousand, eighty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. On favor.
All right, I need a second. May I keep going?
Yes, please.
Any other questions on this? Uh so moving forward, now that we're into the the school year today, it's the first day of school. Uh a lot of the town is gonna see us have a lot more involvement now in the school. So as long as there's no calls going on during the day, during the morning drop-off hours and the evening pickup hours, there's gonna be a cruiser at the school. And us kind of walking around, you know, visiting with the kids if they're getting interrupted by their parents or the bus, or we'll be inside while they're having breakfast. And um. At the end of the day, we'll be there while they're doing their end of the day recess or waiting for the bus or anything like that. So just put that out there to the public. If you start seeing cruisers there more, it's something that we're gonna implement this year.
Gonna be uh doing that every day.
As long as there's no calls going on Monday through Friday during the morning drop-off and evening pickup, we're gonna, we're gonna be there.
We used to do that all the time.
Right, stop the school bus signs.
Okay, so more for.
I mean, it's it's more or less, it's it's. The the school bus having us there, and it's something that I wanted to do. You know, implement that more as us having more involvement there, you know, and the kids are getting dropped off and, you know, getting picked up and. If the school bus drivers are having issues, you will then see us there in the mornings, be like, hey, this morning I had this. Yeah, you know, then they, you know, at the end of the day, we go out, follow that bus. If they have one car that's doing it constantly. Then we know that we're right behind them as they leave the school and we can, we can, you know, get rid of that issue. So. Very good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca, you're up.
Thank you for getting your report done. I know that it's the third and. Yeah, no, it worked out okay. Um things have slowed down a little bit, so I actually got, we looked at the papers done last week and just. Finished it up today and got it out.
Okay, so tell us then.
So some things have slowed down a little bit. Um I issued the eight permits. This month, um. And uh. I've followed up on a couple of problems and I'm still waiting for responses to leverage or callbacks. We've got a couple of people there. So give them another. Into into this month and then. Couple of needs and I'll follow up again. But I don't have um. I haven't had a lot. A lot, a whole lot. Going wrong. I mean, some individual cases are. Kind of interesting. Like someone who has a property down in the road in their hand subdivision. Uh I've uh uh someone who has a property down in Ingraham subdivision. That's trying to get the history of when those all those tiny little lots were merged, and we don't have any. Um tax maps earlier than nineteen seventy-three. No, 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 this is just the individual property owner. Ingraham subdivision is a. Yeah, it was uh. It was done in nineteen oh eight. With hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of lots, and many of them have been. Merged from, you know, sixteen of an acre, so we, so we've got, still got a lot of lot, but when they're two acres. But every once in a while, you get someone who comes in and said, well, wait a minute, you know, we didn't ever merge this. And I have to say, well, it's been a, it's been a single lot for tax purposes for the last seventeen years. Probably helpful, but but basically put it back on them if they need to research it. And it's, you know, it's a kind of interesting question. Make me glad I did the work when I first got here to get a decent map of Ingraham subdivision, so we know what's going on. But so. I mean, I, what I did was I went to the registry and I got, I got um scans of the original. Uh Ingraham subdivision that had been filed with the registry. And then I overlaid that with our tax map, so I could get to the point, so we can clearly establish which lots. Under our current law, if we're within that subdivision, the issue being that there are a lot of paper roads in that subdivision. And when someone, the property owner, they come to me and says this or that or the other, about the roads and how they want to do this or the other. I can say, well. They're undeveloped, they're owned by everyone in the subdivision, and get yourself a lawyer. And get everyone that's on this map that I've created for you. And then you could get rid of some of them if you wanted to, or or do whatever you wanted to do. Um because, you know, that's what I did.
Sort of like the classics.
Yeah, they're private roads.
But I could just get an application where where someone had put on it. The septic plan was, which is already provided, and I called them and said, we, a real site plan for me. What they called, one of those paper roads, they called it a writer's.
Charlie Rush, we never follow up.
I don't know what I'm supposed to be following up on, so no one gets everyone that's.
I'm good. The shortest I've seen this in years.
Well, we've knocked off a few on the top half. I can call her, so that's good, and and some of the top half ones are just very slow-going. Um but but things have slowed down a little bit, too. Um although I am seeing, I'm I'm glad, I'm kind of glad and see. Excuse me, the occasional single-family home, as opposed just of lots and lots of accessory. Uh structures, I mean, it's nice to see you.
Can you let us know if any legal letters you can blow up, obviously?
Yeah, um. Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything that uh. I mean, if we get a letter number three, as I sometimes call. Um we'll uh we can, we can bring it up if it's a legal issue, we we probably do it. A point where we'd have a non-public, a little time with discussing. But but right now, things are. It's going on pretty smoothly. I just had a good, good meeting with the Chair of the Planning Board. Stop by for a personal question that we discussed, you know, going forward in the fall, whether there are gonna be amendments and stuff. That was a good meeting to know where we're going and what might we we be done, so.
Any questions from the public?
Thank you.
Thirty is number eight.
That's all right.
All right, next is uh. Or do the smaller or the bigger? Of course. It doesn't work.
Unlike you and I, I use mine.
Yeah, so. Gotta look at the price.
This is from Sam Suzie Associates, I believe I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Yeah, you're doing a good journey. Price proposal. We propose a fixed annual cost of thirteen thousand six hundred dollars per year for five years, including. Twenty twenty-five reevaluation and four other things. This price includes twenty twenty-five reevaluation for for ERA, abatement, appeal, abatement, appeal, legally. Station work in addition to the proposal on a time period based. Basic, basic based on closed rate sheet, which I think is on the final page. So, Crystal Engineers, Senior Reporters, etc., three hundred fifty dollars an hour. Research Engineers Associates, Freezer Three Hundred, Technical Personnel, two twenty-five, and Particul- Personnel, I need to. So I'll just hang on for a second. You got a knife out? Uh this was from uh. Uh Tyler Technologies. Our people are generals, assessing surfaces for the county. Not to respond. So basically, after reviewing your requests and considering the sixteen. Ex- sixteen contracts, we have decided not to respond that this. So we got one bit. Where do we go from here?
I want to redo it. Me as well.
I just want to add one thing. I believe they're the ones who looked at, who wanted to just adjust entirely. So I don't know if it stated that in there. They're the ones who specifically asked. If they could do the on part.
But when I read it, it's page six.
It did say for the reevaluation as well.
Okay, I know they had asked, but I wanted to make sure it was for.
Yeah, totally re-evaluation, twenty twenty-five. Right.
We need to schedule one, so yeah, I. Will you be back next Friday?
When you be back? October sometime? I know, but I'm just trying to get you to. Okay, September fifteenth. So the week of the sixty? We do have a work session at one o'clock. Eighteen time uh Tyler.
So seventeen, there's the one.
One more section.
Then we'll have the regular meeting that that.
But that's at one o'clock this morning.
So one of them is at one.
Can we put it in between one and four? I mean, two, three, or whatever for?
I wouldn't see why not. The only thing is we'll have. Um two other work sessions to schedule, which is also one of the business. So I don't know if you want to do one for everything and just tackle it in one meeting.
All right, we started one on the.
We definitely need a very.
Got any questions?
This is the.
It's a box.
This is for engine two.
One that stops checking me about. But you won't worry about it then anyway.
It's like they say, you don't worry about the bullet you heard. It's one you didn't hear. I don't even know if I'm opening up a great ball. This was built by NASA.
Coming to the table.
They're located in.
Name of the company?
Autotronics.
So we only get one?
Want to go one?
So for reference, when we initially started this, we had free quotes from three different agencies that we kind of started to come up with our numbers. Um when we did the RFP, we sent it out to all three of those same companies and requested that they rebid. Um as well as about four or five other companies. Basically, anybody we could find in New England, we sent the RFP to. And this agency is the only one that responded. Uh I will say, I haven't seen this yet, but based on the quotes, they were the intermediate that we were kind of looking at from the beginning anyway, so.
Is it okay if I just have to, you know, more details about it, all these? For your proposals.
So they separated it out by section, which was one of our big requests, so that's. It actually gives a dollar amount to each section of item, so the pump is a section, the motor is a.
So why don't you just give a rough detail of the first one?
Yeah, so the chassis. Twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty for the refurbishment. Uh the cab, eleven thousand two hundred and sixty. Additions to the paint, things like the reflective chevrons and things like that going on the back, eighty-one thousand six hundred and twenty. The hose storage up on top, seven thousand eight hundred and fifty. Ladder storage, thirteen thousand eight hundred and eighty. Uh water and foam tank, two thousand fifty. Pumping valves, discharges, and converting it from the top to the side, seventy-eight thousand three hundred and thirty. Uh warning lighting, twenty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty. Miscellaneous hardware, twenty-five hundred. For a total of two hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety. Fifty percent payment would be due when they pick the truck up. The remainder is due when they deliver it back. Estimated start date would be July of twenty-five, and then estimated return February of twenty-six. It's like a three-year, thirty-six thousand mile warranty on the conversion itself, so the. The body elements, latches and things like that. Five years, sixty thousand miles on the electrical, that's, that's good for electrical. Five years, sixty thousand for paint. One year, twelve thousand miles for any graphics to put on. And they are located in Frenchville, Maine.
Right, so you want to do this one? What's the time period for response and then say?
I don't think it specifies.
I would assume you're gonna have to book it ahead of time, it's gonna be a while.
I do have quite a few references in here, too, that are local.
You want to try to put it into the work session on the seventeen? See how we go.
Yes, could. We review that time to be and just look at it and see.
Yeah.
Based on the RFP. But they've responded to everything that we requested.
Absolutely. Wish there's nothing about one with that personal to them.
And you check the references to them.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Let's keep them a million dollars, you try.
Absolutely. Lancaster, New Hampshire, Caribou, Maine, Portland, Maine. Gray, Maine. Portland again, forty-fifth parallel EMS in Culver, New Hampshire. Gilson, New Hampshire, Farmington, New Hampshire, Rochester, New Hampshire, Meredith, New Hampshire, Lancaster, New Hampshire. Those are all their references.
Did they? Probably didn't review it, but they didn't say I want to offer it behind it.
I was.
July to July next.
July to February, I think it's.
July twenty-five, February twenty-two, correct?
It's about what I expected.
Eight months.
I may have a truck to can borrow in the interim.
Okay. Well, good.
Yep, for the moment.
So the work sessions.
Can I take a copy of multiple copies of the assessment?
I would assume, yeah, I don't see a problem. You want a copy?
Yes, please. Thank you, thank you.
So we already scheduled the work session. Oh. Now, we're gonna do some high river RFPs.
We were not planning on doing the board of selectmen ones on the seventeenth because it's been.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, the selectmen, five minutes, we're gonna have about ten fifteen. A lot of them, Michelle and I have contracts and stuff, I can, you know, add them for them, you know, to review. Being that, you know. Be for the second one. So just, just a thought on that, I don't know everything for the seventeenth so far.
No.
If those two will bitch at that time.
Yeah. Um. Wouldn't have to be. To the little group in the budget. Do we have to have?
So they have to, all budget draft sheets have to be turned in May on September twenty-seventh. And then for. One of, a couple of the budgets for Boris laughing are October first from cracks. You know, PLA Lake Coast. Um.
You have the list?
I have the list, I don't have her in front of me, but yeah.
So we probably can address those first. For first budgeting.
The work session for. I never. We do that sooner, I know you're gonna be gone, you'll be okay with that, because we're gonna be discussing the. The dirt work side of it.
Yep.
You'll be okay with that?
Yep.
We work on that and then I can send you anything. Thank you.
Yeah, because he doesn't have his. At the end and then.
I won't send a via email, so I get.
Okay. So let's.
Go ahead.
Let's try to schedule that next week. Or this week.
Do you have anything going on this Friday? If no, we.
I'm the, I'm the. You're gone.
You said the fifteenth, so we need one. I'm back on the fifteenth. Right, you're back, but that still puts out next for.
I do. Guys, uh, what time Friday?
Anytime.
I want to like your breakfast or something.
Uh, I'll be long done with coffee by eight o'clock.
But that's good.
Earlier about three.
Whatever you want.
What time was the seventeenth? One, right?
Right. Didn't he chief get this? The. Down Street.
I, I can, no, that's not, you're okay, I think I got the wrong one. No, but I can take a copy for him.
There's a wire.
Okay, it's Bill's recommendation on.
Okay, I saw the wire, but I haven't seen it.
So, um. One seventy-six Elm Street. There was a. Carnival held. Uh. Uh, that, what you say, it says carnival of the sin. It was held, uh. August ninth and not through August twelfth. And there was no permits issue. And live music, barbecue, yeah, whatever, but goes pretty well detailed. So chief, uh. Health officer made some recommendation, uh. Stay at some points outdoor for that equipment. Building and zoning permit, planning board site, food, fan approval. NFPA one. Life safety code. New Hampshire Liquor Commission. Public bathing places. Stacey, the S X R S A. So there was a lot of violations.
Awesome.
Awesome, right? Yeah. So, how do we go about it? Do we send a letter?
We need some love.
I was just gonna say, one of Bill's recommendations were sending a letter, um, in that for like that first paragraph that you see. Kind of gave a description of a letter to send to, you know.
Alright, great.
But the town mill, the computer events, like, I need to hold.
And just keep it on your radars.
Yeah, as long as we add one word in there prior to any future event.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. You're back on this agenda again, Keith.
Oh, yeah. Alright, um, FEMA has started all over again for the April storm, so I've got a number of things related to that. We have filed an insurance claim for both the generator and the damage to the roof at the fire station. FEMA basically. It has, it has to go through the insurance and the FEMA will potentially pick up the rest after that. So we filed the insurance claim, I'm waiting for an adjuster to come out and look at both, but both items could be covered under the insurance policy. FEMA will probably pick up the, um, deductible, and then if there's, if the project is more than they allot, FEMA may pick up some of that too. Uh, FEMA also may pick up some of the mitigation, so like with the generator. If there's some kind of, the, the generator failed because of a surge, so if there's some kind of surge protection that can put between the outside power and the generator. That would be mitigation, they may pay for that, so. Um. With that being said, I have an estimate from our generator contractor for the replacement of the generator. And then I have a quote for the roof replacement from. Not a current vendor, but a potential vendor. Um. Because these are replacements of something that was damaged, I don't know if we need to go out for an RFP. I read through the procurement policy today, it's kind of gray, I think. So I'm, I'm trying to find out if we should. Take these and utilize them, or if we need to go through a full RFP.
You got some roofing?
Yeah, start with that.
Um, what you blessing?
Thirty thousand six hundred and eighty. Complete replacement.
That's another day.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking towards as well. The generator is twenty-nine thousand nine hundred.
Who's a customer, who's this for?
That's generator connection, now that one is a little different because that's our established vendor. Who does all the work on our generators, supplies all our current generators, so maybe that one can be. There is a provision in the purchasing policy for an establishment.
Will have to or no?
No, they're existing vendors.
The generator, I would lean towards that. Right, but the roof, I think we should RFP the generator, I think we should just move with what we have.
So the second question on the generator. I don't think we should put it back where it is.
Correct, and that is part of this book. Um. The quote is worded for the insurance company. So, you know, it gives the basics of the project to replace, um, but we had a conversation about moving it elsewhere and you can work that all into the projects.
And the insurance company won't cover anything on a generator or?
They more than likely will. The, um, adjuster's coming out, and the adjuster will have the official answer, but.
Would you look at it price-wise? Cost-wise?
Like over and above what they cover or? I, I couldn't say yet, I feel the adjuster's here, but the total cost is twenty-nine thousand nine hundred.
So I'd ask them for a call, Russ, where I could grant at the library for branding generator. And it was twenty-five thirty, so that's. No, I went back to generator connection.
Oh, generator.
And then basically said, I need a call for a grand app. And it was twenty-five thirty.
Um, and that is for a polar generator, it's not another Winco or any. Other different brand, it is a cool one, so.
Yeah, so where would it come out of?
That would win, it's all insurance.
Yeah, if, if it all comes from the insurance, it'd be fine, uh, we do have the trust fund for generators, and there is. A substantial amount in that, so if there was an overage that wasn't covered by anybody, we would have the funds.
Okay.
Alright, so I expect that it will be fully covered between FEMA and everything.
And a roof?
Uh, I think we put an RFP out for the roof and.
And still we get back. Is that covered or?
That will be covered, yeah. Yeah, there's no question about that being covered, it's just. They're gonna come out and tell us something.
But they only cover the damage here, the entire roof.
That's the question, and, and it's along the same lines as a generator, I mean, the generator. The reason it needs to be replaced is because parts aren't available, it's not because the thing's junk, it's, we can't find the parts to fix it. The roof is kind of the same deal, we can't find the same sheet metal to match up with what we currently have, so it needs to be redone. And now there's water damage underneath it and things like that, so the, the underlying that needs to be redone as well.
So it's just one side or both sides they're gonna do?
This quote is the whole thing. From the back, and this is shameful, it's not.
The, as far as insurance claims go, there was. Damage to the york cruiser. Yeah, is that insurance thing?
The insurance covered all but a hundred dollar deductible and. Assuming we, there's a threshold at the FEMA level. If you don't hit a certain amount in the category, you don't. Apply, I don't know if that hundred dollars is gonna meet the category, if it does, they'll pay the other dollars to pay.
And did you have damage to the undercarriage of the? Towels and oils of the cruiser?
Right, yeah, it's just stuff that to put back together, there's a trim piece that's missing, but. Sure it is.
Did you get built for that?
The stuff we put back together, um, except for. The one that. Was balled up underneath, we had to put on a lift. There was just something that we put back.
Stand, stand back here.
Yeah. Just the road stuff I have along for April was at. Just over a hundred thousand, a hundred and eight thousand, I think we're at, so. Be the biggest one yet, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Um. I took the roofing RFP, the truck that for the library. And made it fit the fire station. And have a draft, so if we want to put that out. Proper here for each of you and. You're good with that, we can just get this ball rolling, I'd like to try and move on this before snow hits. Water is seeping around the patch and under the tar, so.
I already knew that, Joe.
Nope. He did the best he could with what he had.
I know. Actually, I guess I'm a little sitting up, like, sitting on my wood club.
Yeah.
Do we try flexing when we can?
Sure did.
You have any, uh. As far as you're looking at the, at least get three or four out there.
I don't, I, I have, other than this, this company, and, and this company is the same one that did it on the, the library project as well, James and with me.
Wow, yeah, I would, I would in addition.
Absolutely, so if. If anybody else has recommendations. Where we can, where we can push the RFP. That would be good.
Yeah, one recommendation, and I know a person like this one is instruction summary. Right, that's what it's called?
What you got a blank book?
Cause I have a blank book.
Yeah, that's alright. So it's called, right, instruction summary? But they also do.
Oh, that's where they put the, that's where.
RFP.
Yeah, that's where to put the RFP.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry, yep. Not to actually get on, but to post.
No, to post it.
Yeah. Oh, okay. It's a free. Website where all the contractors, you know, that I talk to, the idea where. They say the first thing they do in the morning when they get in is they go on there to see what they're up for RFP, they'll there still.
You got that?
Okay, um, yeah, so if, uh, let us know and get work with Caitlin.
Yeah. I mean, we want to take a minute to review this. I don't want really.
Did you say you're meeting on Friday? Work session on Friday? Do you want to have an answer by then?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that. We'll pull off the Friday.
You can look at it.
Yeah.
Uh, it's mostly from template I have used and I told them to dumb it down.
Okay.
Good, but, yeah. Perfect.
Friday.
Last thing, I promise, um, the AFG, I said I was gonna have a RFP draft for that as well. The grant we got for the hosts and novels.
Okay.
Um, so this is the RFP draft that we've come up with, um, hopefully Friday we could get this one squared away as well. Um, this one's pretty specific, um. We've done hose demos on some different types of hose. You would be amazed to understand how many different types of fire hose there are. And different coatings and different diameters that are, you know, a quarter of an inch different, but it makes such huge difference on the actual flow. And the handling of the hose, so. Some of you may have seen us down at the boat launch over the last couple of days flowing water, and that's what we were doing, we were testing out this hose and seeing how it moves. We were very specific in what we're asking for in the RFP, as far as brand names. We're asking for specific brand names, sizes and colors, and that's all intentional, the colors help us color coding on the truck. And the sizes and the brand are what we like the best and what works the best for us, so they are specific as far as that goes, but. Uh, there are multiple vendors out there that provide each of these brands, so.
So how many suppliers do you have to go up for?
Well, send the RFP out and see what comes back, um, obviously our preference would be to buy everything from, like, a single vendor, but. We wouldn't limit to a single vendor.
So the public knows, I know everybody was here, we got a grant.
Sixty-three thousand, something like that.
For replacing all those system laws with killing him. Okay, we'll read it Friday again.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Public comments. Don't look at each other. I saw, okay, you guys, you're older.
I want to thank Chief Harmon and. His crew for the response to my mother-in-law. The sanity of the truth here. And especially Randy for taking the time to. Drive again at that home. If anybody's wondering, the memorial service, the viewing is gonna be Saturday, the twenty-first. From two to three. And the memorial service from three to four.
Where's this at?
At Lord Sheehan Home.
Let's speak.
I don't think a lot of people know what.
Take a lot.
Forty years with school.
Also in the stolen.
Yeah, the person that has to work helping the kids learn.
Well, didn't you say she thought you had tell time?
Yeah. She was the one that taught me how to rip a park out of all for across me and. Probably wouldn't have gone for that.
I just wonder if. Is it allowed to put something in the website, just make a note? Like this.
I put a, um, the, uh, like the news page. And I have the September twenty-first, right?
Yeah.
Let's get the message out. I realize.
And as an aside. Over the last few days, I've, just to get out and clear my head, I've driven a lot of the roads in town and.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Dave? You all set, Paul? You all set?
Yeah.
Dave Charles, Jack Russell, current pleasure chairman. Mr. Chair, I was informed the boss at a non-public date twenty-one. Probably Mr. Siemens concerning myself about assisting department heads with their budget crap. Without inviting me. I was informed that the non-public meeting called by Mister Seaman, the boss agreed to not let department heads. Meet or to request a meeting with me prior to their budget work session and that this was per RSA. As RSA thirty two clearly shows the budget process, I assure you, I'm very well aware of RSA thirty two. I've been on the budget committee for approximately eleven years, they gladly provide that knowledge to anyone who requests it. Nothing in RSA thirty two prohibits volunteering my time. Nothing in RSA thirty two prohibits me from volunteering my time. I remind the board, Mister Seaman constantly state volunteering is what makes a town. When a town department, committee or commissioner otherwise requests assistance, develop their budget. Prior to presentation, I would of course volunteer my time to assist them. I've met with all of these many a times. Prior to budget season, this and previous years, when they requested it. This year, for some reason, Mister Seaman's been questioning my budget duties. Suggesting I'm overstepping my bounds and attempting to control my active information. For everything that I'm doing that concerns budget, finance and volunteering. This attempt to place roadblocks into his help. Maybe because I'm vocal in pointing out flaws or proposals. But no matter what. The reason for these actions, this is constant confrontational attitude of not helping the sound. Mister Chair, I have two requests. Chair, I request if any further questions by Mister Kestenman concerning myself and I'm contacting the town. Prior to any discussion and decision.
Agreed.
Mister Chair, an email sent to you by me on eight twenty two stated the boss agreed. To not let department heads meet or request to meet with me prior to the budget work session. I know the chiefs were informed, meeting with me was not required. And why they may have thought that this was a fact, I do not know. I've never stated that when they requested my help previously. Because of this fact and my explanation, explanation of volunteering. I request you reverse the non-public eight twenty one agreement to not allow department heads or otherwise. To meet with me prior to budget presentation, if they request or desire to do so.
That one will have to discuss between the two. The board and get back to you on that one.
Do you need me to repeat that?
Yes, please.
I know the chiefs were informed, meeting with me was not required, why they have thought this is a fact, I don't know, I've never stated that when they requested my help. Because of this fact and my explanation of volunteering. I request you reverse the non-public of eight twenty one agreements. To not allow the department heads or otherwise to meet with me prior to budget presentation. If they request or desire to do so, as I am a volunteer.
Was there agreement on? Or we just stated that you should meet the board first.
Your email stating it was an agreement.
I probably chose the wrong word. That was on the email? Eight twenty two? I sent to you.
Six, six point agree.
Sure, it's a different term. It should have been. We requested the, it should have been requested. Edit departments, leave the dissection first. Discuss the budgets, that's what they should have said. My apologies.
Is there a problem with the board? Explaining that they can meet with anybody they desire to who's volunteering as they wish.
As my, I'm gonna speak, I don't have you guys speak, my personal opinion, I think. As a select board, as departments are important to the select board. I would rather have. I would push or rather have like. The departments come to the select board first. Discuss their volunteer budgets. And then, if you wanna bring it to you after, not a problem. But I would rather have them talk to us first. That's my, I mean, from business standpoint, that's the way I'm.
This is when they requested, I didn't request.
I understand that. I understand that.
If they decide to have my knowledge, I would be more than happy to volunteer. They don't want my knowledge, they don't have to ask for it.
I don't.
They should dictate to someone. In a department, whether or not they can get assistance, they desired to do so. I know for a fact, select board members, not in a meeting, have gone to the pockets to provide their knowledge. As a volunteer.
Anybody wanna play then?
So I've actually, before I stepped into this position, I actually had conversations with department heads about. Running business, running departments and running budgets. So what you're saying is, an apartment head, or what we've been, what we did say is, department heads. Could not talk to anybody until they talked with select board.
And I said I made a mistake.
And I'm thinking that's not right. Because we can't dictate who they can talk to or not, if they want to talk. We can, we can ask for a preference, this is what we would prefer you not to do. Or prefer you a procedure to do. But dictating to them that they can't talk to people, I don't think we can do that.
comics. At the risk of getting into a tics tat, which I don't intend to. My intention was to change the culture. That our department heads need to get. The good graces of the budget committee chairman before they move forward with their budget. I believe I stated that in that meeting that day. I did not ask for a non-public specifically for that, we were in non-public. And that topic was brought up during non-public.
Mister Chair, I'll remind you, I'm not asking, they're not asking for my good graces, they're asking for my knowledge. And not as a budget committee member, they're asking for my knowledge as an overall budget. I'm not representing the budget committee and they know that when they represented. When I represent myself in front of them, as I have to the fire chief. With the question that he had for me prior to this year. Prior to your meeting. And other departments, library, H T C, H T C. When they ask, I have no problem at giving them help.
I understand you. Personally, I appreciate what you do for the town.
Well, your email gave it the impression that.
Wow, you should have said something to me at that time, because we. We go back a long ways, I probably said I apologize. Of course, using the wrong term on it. You wanna accept, you don't wanna accept apologies, okay.
Well, your apology to me was because. Because of not being invited to the meeting. It wasn't because of that, it was, but regardless of the fact, all I'm asking is. If it was a misunderstanding on the email. It should be, anybody can ask for help anytime they want. They shouldn't be injured in thinking inside to do so. Because if someone.
Going to that point.
If someone asks me for help, I wanna give it to them. Nothing prohibits me from volunteering.
In that evening, in that meeting, I said from a advisory standpoint, anybody that wants to get advice. Should be able to reach out and we, and we did say in that meeting. If somebody reaches out for advice, that was okay.
That is true. Now sufficient for age.
Okay, we're good with it, they wanna seek advice first. We still have to find a save. Okay. Sorry, man.
They go back.
Flatter. Line. No, you don't stand up, just flatter.
Siemens movie road, that's how we're supposed to do this.
No, you don't have to stand.
I have a question about the event on Elm Street. Um I saw the signs, they're writing some sort of a function. Um were they charging admission, does anyone know?
They were.
So it makes it an actual. Event.
And if I may add to that. The flyer that we were presented was directly off of a Facebook page.
Did you see it, Melissa?
Which is, which is, was public, so.
That was a public advertising for the party.
So it's, okay, thank you for sharing that, I see a pre-sale, I just don't see.
I don't see it.
I mean, pre-sale typically means you're selling tickets, but I don't see a ticket price.
They had admission signs.
Or.
At the address during the event.
Thank you. So the town of Ospe just did something pretty amazing that I never thought I'd see since. Sias Farm tried to have nice little concerts in the field about thirty five years ago. The town of Ospe lifted its outdoor event permit process, you don't need one in the town of Ospe anymore. But we can be grownups, we can behave, we can be kind to our neighbors, we cannot set off fireworks and. Whatever. No permits required anymore in town of Ospe, you know, it asked that the. So I'm backing him, consider that.
So something like this. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have to provide for.
Nope, they just. So and I. I asked that, I I called the town administrator, cause I couldn't believe it, I'm like, nobody takes away restrictions. And. After, and they've been through a lot over there, a lot of people have had to go to site plan review and planning board and. Six months worth of application review and just. It's all gone, huh? So. I mean, for the most part.
I I would have concerned for the sample like this party. Music, loud music, you know, what time they're playing till, I mean, what the neighbor's gonna say. That's.
I I understand, I live on a road where people like to come on the weekends. Totally get it, but. It's where we are, it's where they play. They don't require an outdoor permit, cause it's just, you know. Forty people in the front yard having a fire and drinking beers. I. What's the difference?
I would probably request it will uh warn or let the tax first, but uh.
I'm not saying everything, but you you mentioned in that recommendation or something about it needed site plan review and zoning board.
No, no, those, those were, those were different elements, I think Bill was basically saying it could touch on.
Oh, okay.
Right.
It wasn't saying it was required.
But you're allowed to have a party on Elm Street, but maybe you can have on Olivia Road or.
No, it was basically saying near the areas that it could touch and that was it. Who, you know, there was maybe.
Yeah, could.
It could, could. I mean, they're selling, they could be selling liquor, well, that's a violation, liquor commission, unless they've got a liquor license. You know, had they checked out, all it was saying is, have you checked out these other areas? Were just education, it wasn't saying these were the violation.
And I appreciate the due diligence for where we stand today, I'm just suggesting that. And next, the next time over with lots of people and lots more things has decided that, you know what, we're just gonna let people. Do their thing, there weren't any bad things. Um there's no woods. Um this, this summer, this, we've had holiday, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, nothing bad happened. People just got along and did their thing, so. I know it's scary to list rules, I know, but it's.
Yeah, I guess.
It's an interesting concept, I hadn't thought of.
I'd be interested, you know. Maybe I'll talk to the fire chiefs, the police over there, just to see how, before I would propose any kind of a change, but. You know how I am personally in this whole. As long as you're not dumping your sewage in my drinking water, I don't give a crap what you're doing to property, so. I'm on the no zoning side. And I'm proud to say that, but.
Would you propose a.
The fewer rules, the better.
Would you propose a order? I think, but the tax first all.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me get my name on the front page of the town report again. The petitioner person on his own, I'm just gonna wear, I'll wear the T-shirt.
I mean, I I think that'd be a fair way, I mean, for us street.
Yeah, no, and really, my only comment was Ospe lifted theirs, that's it. So as you're, you know, as you might think about it going towards March as well. That's all I'm asking for you to consider.
Bring something forward, Melissa, to let the people know, I'd be in favor of that.
I have a problem with that at all.
Because I think it's, it's basically, the masses basically say this is what they write, I wouldn't have agreed that.
They have a big scary fire, of course, the fire department's gonna get called, but you're gonna get called when they're, I have a big scary fire at my house. You know, my bonfire today. Or I'm having a party. Or I decided that, you know, when we haven't had rain for six months, it's a good idea to burn your brush pile. It it's gonna happen anyway. You know, so.
You have to.
For the most part, I think people behave, they're trusting.
You have a comment for it?
Uh yeah, actually, you know, what I think she's. Almost touching on is. When Bill made that statement about certain things, like let's say that we're gonna build a stadium, you know. A bandstand or something for the band to play on, you can't just have like someone just slap up some wood on top of souls. People get up there, you know, so certain things will have to get.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
It's on them and then certainly, I mean, something bad happens, they're gonna lose everything.
The reasonable. Well, that's what I'm saying, that's why Bill.
Same responsibility, respect for each other, having more fun, wouldn't hurt.
Some of those things is on the flyer, it does state it's the second annual. Third annual, third annual, sorry, third annual. So it's already happened three times, if you have an annual event, so if they're charging admission. They're at this place, then that may touch upon an event place. Much like if you had a barn and you were doing wedding venues, just a few times a year, that has to go before site plan review, we currently have. An application uh and going through the process, I believe. Um I'm probably asleep for that. And just, just a real quick history of why we have outdoors events ordinance, because. One of the upsides to if we get away with this. Is the street fair, the street dances and things like that, even though they're nonprofits and. A lot of times on town property. Or always on time property, um being in a roadway or whatever, they have to go before this too.
Oh, they do.
Yeah, so if we did away with that, they would have to go through that as well.
Well, we still have to request a street.
Right, but. And 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 just a real quick history. The reason why we have an outdoor events ordinance now is because what originally started as Brookfest. That was at Moose Mountain, that after a unfortunate accident, killed a motorcycle guy and was a fundraiser and that became an annual thing. And they did away with it, at Brookfest at Moose Mountain, if that get moved to Sias Farm. When the town of Ospe said you can no longer hold this event here. Those of you who've been here long enough, it was moved to the Red Barn on Rifle Road. And. They had one event there and they had a very, very large event that was scheduled, the pole buses were stopped by myself, I was a board member then. As long, uh along with uh Donald Bliss, the um fire marshal at the time and some law enforcement agencies. We stopped the pole buses before they got there. And it was after that, because unfortunately, the town of Hefingham has always been reactive as opposed to proactive. Um so in a reaction to that. The outdoor events permit was born. And ordinance, so that's just a real quick history.
The response.
Yeah, so I agree, I agree that that people should have the right to use their property as they see fit. Um the only thing that I would say is, I think there needs to be a scale. I think there's a difference between having a birthday party in the backyard and something like this. Um there were a few hundred tickets sold to this, that's a lot of people in one place. Um in little teeny tiny letters, it's a teacher magnifying glass at the bottom, it says you get a cup on your way in and we'll refill it until we fill you need to be cut off. So they're providing alcohol without. Theoretically without permission from the alcohol commission. Um they did build a stage, there's a video on their Facebook page of a janky stage that they're, they're on, they did have a fire without a permit. Um and life safety code does apply regardless, that's at the fire marshal's level, um you also need a permit for camp. And they had, it says Bernie Penn, so they were camping people, so. Even if Ospe did away with the outdoor permit, all that fire marshal stuff still applies. So I think the permit's the only way we're gonna know the event's happening, that's the tough part. So. I get it, I just, those are my concerns right off the bat, you know, they've got that many people there, they're camping, where are they going to the bathroom? How are they cleaning themselves, you know, what are they burning? Are they doing it safely, that's, that's my concern. So.
Not, not saying it won't chase fire trucks for a long time, did anything bad happen?
Yep, point taken.
I know what next year will look like, I got it.
As far as the alcohol sales go, it's, of course, I don't work for the National Labor Enforcement. But from my understanding, for me, as long as if a property owner brings in a. Bartender or if they are using a bartender, they can provide up to a certain point, whatever the property owner gives them. They can dish it out, whatever that bartender sees fit.
They can dish it out, whatever that bartender seems fit, because they have. Uh, you know, their bartender's license and their subject ending. Like weddings for a daughter. Right, same idea, so, you know, if they have people there that are monitoring that. I wouldn't say that's in violation of the liquor code, it's a little different than, you know, your buddy's coming over and you serve them, you don't have a liquor license, but if. Something happens and. Down the road, is that gonna fall back on you, maybe? More or less, it's gonna be like, well, you should have been smarter with your friends, but at least then they have someone that's monitoring it, from my standpoint, I understand that. You know, as long as that the property owner is providing it and not. I would say charging like for. Profit, more or less they could like say, hey, you know, donations to help us recoup. That that wouldn't be a violation of the liquor law from my understanding of it. Um, we got under people. Well, I understand what you're saying, that's how.
One percent is good.
So. That's my understanding of that portion of the alcohol sale, that's my only thing I wanted to touch on is just, you know, if there is the property owners providing it and they're bringing in a service provider to do so, that's on them. You know, it's on the service provider, their license and their insurance. Assuming they are bringing in a service provider, it's basically they call it a dry hire. So.
If you, um. One more procedural question that you guys have given me a lot to think about before I put my name on anything. Um. Sometimes it requires site plan review. So. If the selectmen were to, if the town was to have the selectmen lift the ordinance. Does that, are you required to then do it or is it advisory? Second, um, would it also. Require someone going to the plan lawyer, ask for a zoning amendment?
Oh, yeah.
At the same.
Yeah, just because we get rid of the ordinance.
You wouldn't have the.
None, none of the rest of the policies disappeared.
It was still, okay. Thank you. Um, oh, he left, I didn't. Um.
Who, Dave or Paul?
Um. Uh, I didn't wanna sound offensive, because I certainly would never want to do that, and it's hard when your husband's a slapman, so bear with me. Um. As a member of the public, I listen in on his Zoom, I'm not there on his Zoom, do you have anybody? Think he was on, he's no longer, I mean, she's the only one. He he wasn't, but she's not on anymore, so she must have cut off. Sorry, my question was.
That's okay.
So. Just observing, reading the minutes, listening to meetings, different things. I feel like there's a blurred line between the role of the budget committee chair and the board of selectmen.
Um.
Sorry.
Uh, what?
Talk like a mouse, I'm sorry.
But not all the time, right? Um. I feel like there's a blurred line between the responsibilities of the. Budget Committee Chair and the Board of Selectmen, a lot of time, because I listen to the meetings, usually I try to tune in every time on the Zoom at least. And I hear like, um, well, I was in the office for a few hours and I, you know, had. Michelle. Make adjustments to the budget versus actual, or, you know, I'm I'm gonna tell the Budget Committee that we're, you know, this is the plan, or I list, I read Budget Committee meeting minutes and sometimes it sounds like. They're just kind of there, and in all fairness, I haven't been to one of their meetings recently, but. That. He's got the plan and he's got the experience, and so he comes and does. The, you know, tells people how it's gonna go, and I think, I think it's pretty blurry. And there's plenty of literature on the segregation between um the duties and what the roles and responsibilities and what is overstep. As far as the Budget Committee Chair goes, and I just, I'm hoping that. I understand what he says, you know, I'm just volunteering as Dave. You're not Chris, you're not Leo, you're not Chuck, you're selectmen, 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 and he's the Budget Committee Chair, no matter if he's here. At a restaurant, at the street fair, at a Budget Committee meeting, doesn't matter. It's the Budget Committee Chair, he's not, he's not just a volunteer, offering his. Knowledge. Um, but it concerns.
He's off his knowledge as a.
It concerns me that when I hear that um manipulate's a bad word, but. That he's making changes to your document. Meaning the budget versus actual or recoding things or or doing those things, and I would just ask that you consider limiting the amount of time that the chairman is in the office. Certainly, if they go to the Budget Committee meeting and they're reviewing the budget versus actual, and they have some questions or concerns, I could put them in writing or in the minutes and forward them to selectmen, so you had to deal with it, but I get concerned when I hear. Find me a synonym for manipulation, because that's not it.
I could tell you after that, I mean, seven thousand numbers.
Yeah.
I mean. We're trying to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, and it in. Dave, Dave is a point person. On stringing out the grand stock. Rather than having three or four of us coming in and trying to work with Michelle to do it, it makes sense to provide the information to one individual. To do that. But I will also tell you, if you attended his budget meetings, and you look at the list of errors on the budget to actual. There's numerous things are not coded properly, that he is the one that researches and finds out. And then works to get recruit, re- re-coded. Properly, so that the numbers are actually actual on here, nobody else is doing that most. I for one, want him doing that kind of thing, because it's a check and balance. To the system.
I think the Budget Committee and the selectmen are the checks and balance, I think they should be separate, I don't think he should be. Making and 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 in all fairness, I'm gonna throw one out there.
Yeah.
If things are coded wrong, that's your job.
And I agree, that's why you saw there's a low agitation between Dave and I. Cause I've been, he's been told. Seven thousand numbers. It's been a screw up for ten years, five years.
It hasn't been right for five years.
Okay, fair, okay.
Fair, the rest.
I work at the county finance, learning.
Doctor. Before the show, it's any jettison, Dave wants, he need, she needs to contact me with. Or me, or Dave makes calls me or sends an email, say, we got an issue, this one, this one, review it, make sure Caitlin's. For everybody else, that's why I don't say much in my selectmen report, because I'm dealing with the office all the time. So, yes, I know what's going on, but.
Hey, I'm just.
I just, I just wanna make sure you understand that's why we're sort of like.
And that budget's yours.
I know, I agree.
The the town employees work for you. You work with them, you craft the budget, and then you punt it over the wall to the Budget Committee.
That's my point when I said.
I.
I know you'd disagree with me, but.
Well, I'm a firm believer of taking new people and helping to coach them on how to make and run budgets. These guys have never had formal training to do that, I've got thirty plus years of doing it. And if I can impart a bit of wisdom on, consider these kinds of ways of doing it. Then I'm gonna impart that wisdom every day of the week. Because going in cold. Is not the way to try and draft a budget. I've been in this chair long enough to know that sitting here, a lot of stuff gets rubber stamped with a lot, without a lot of review and approval.
In the past.
In the past.
Yes, that's, that's simple, that's okay.
I'm here this year, I haven't been here in the previous years while you've been sitting here. So it's one of those things like, I am gonna continue to do that, I deal with these guys one on one outside all the time talking about budget. I deal with other commissions and boards talking about budgets, I am not going to stop doing that from an advisory standpoint. Because I know, no decision is happening until it comes here.
Commissioner, uh, selectmen fuller. You, they work for you. Great. That's, and you, and you, your questions, you hash things out, it's the segregation, it would be. In my mind, where I'm at today. You know, based on where I work, you're the commissioners. And that's the delegation, there is no way. That the nursing home administrator is gonna go sit down with the chairman of the delegation and go over his budget before he brings it to the commissioners. So that's how, that's my, you know, that's how I relate to here.
Uh, and that.
My respect, I respect that.
You can have mutual respect, you can bounce things off each other, chair to chair, board to board. But. The 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 employees and and. The rest of us that kind of sway in the middle, we report, otherwise it's gonna, something. The appearance is ugly, if you're looking at it from the outside. That's all, I know, it it's like a fourth selectmen and at times, and it's a challenge to.
And try, I, you know, I done the corporate world.
I do, yeah.
And I done million dollar budget.
I do, yeah.
And. The way I did my budgets, my could my, people work, stuff like that, presented, whatever. First avenue was, who who you work for? You work for the budget committee or you work for a select? Who they report to? So I would like to see budget for somebody else's economy, so, I mean, there is not a big deal.
And if they decide they wanna talk to anybody in the outside world. Around how the budgets work. How would we see budgets?
I think they know how budgets work, I see JT's.
Just, just listen to me. If somebody wants to ask those questions outside of the three of us. They should not be restricted to do it. They can be coached, this is the way we would like it to happen, but to tell them they can't do it, I'm not gonna do it. If they decide they wanna do it, that's up to them.
And I. So to be clear, and not to beat a dead horse, I thought we clarified this. That my comments and my issue was that they'd come to us first, we're not talking about coaching things, we're talking about presenting their budget, and I. Had this. Fear and this feeling. That the department had felt like, and I made the statement earlier, that they need to get in the good graces before they even present the budget to us.
And I got that.
And not to specifically state any department, but several of our department had agreed. That day, that that is how they felt, and that is a big issue to me, and that is what I was trying to stop. That's it. And, um. One of the points that. Melissa brought up. There are times on specific departments where emails went from the Budget Committee Chair. To a department head directly about how they were doing things. That to me is a severe overreach. I didn't make that comment because he wasn't here, I just, it didn't come up then, but. Like I said, I don't wanna give him a tit for tat, it's just, I wanted to end the culture of this belief that our department heads had to get.
Oh, I think based on the conversation in the last couple of weeks, the point's been made.
And, I mean, and I I wanna add that right here in a public meeting, I made the statement to the Budget Committee Chairman. That we all elected officials have a fiduciary duty to our constituents. To look out for what's in our best interest, and for my bond idea. I'm just gonna use that as a prime example. To flat out stand right there on the other side of that table and say no. Before it's brought before the Budget Committee, there's a Budget Committee member sitting right there and the selectmen's chair is right here. Before it's brought to them. I felt that the chair of the Budget Committee was, wouldn't be doing the due diligence, to his credit, he did agree. That I, you know, that that wouldn't be fair, and we do have a fiduciary duty. But. That's, you know, I don't like that culture, that's all.
Sorry if I made it heated, you guys are getting a lot of fun before I got here.
So, no, Melissa, Melissa, that's, this this subject needs to come up, it's good.
It's, I I just see it from my, I don't come from the corporate, I just all municipal thirty years, like.
It's good.
And it's, and I have to be reminded, lots of people who that I work with over the years have had to be reminded, okay, we're over here, this is over here, there's a segregation for a reason, because. The losses, this is how it's supposed to flow, that's it. Um, what I would like to have, if I could get one at some point, is a copy of the budget versus actual, or the way we voted on it at town meeting and how it compares to today. When I've looked at the budget versus actual, it has like seven thousand lines in these things. When you go to the very bottom line for the budget column, it should match what we voted on at town meeting, and I have. And it's QuickBooks, could be manipulated to give you whatever you want, so you can choose which category. Does it include the extra stuff?
It's gonna be.
You know, I'm.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Okay.
Trying to.
A lot of that's not really important. It's because of QuickBooks.
It's a, you just create a different report that only includes these slides, these account numbers. And not, not the extras. Right, that's all. So you could create a budget versus actual, it doesn't include all the extras, you can check the boxes and stuff.
But you can, uh, QuickBooks, can we just cut it off here?
With what Melissa's saying, the different line items can be gone in and only those line items printed out on a template.
Yeah, you're like.
Not have, it cannot have. The grand stuff, it did not have.
Did, yeah, up to forty minutes.
Yeah, you just go to, I think it's like create a report, and then it has checkboxes for the account numbers you want to include, and then you run the report and see if it matches the town warrant, that would be awesome.
May I ask Melissa a question?
Please.
Hi, once I get the, once I get this from Michelle, yeah, would you like me to email, would you like to come pick up?
Uh, whatever is easiest for you.
Okay, I just wanted to talk to you.
Uh, thank you, so I would just like to see where we are compared to what we voted on.
I like that too.
Okay. Um, and then you guys are really efficient, I tried to get here as fast as I could, did you already open the assessing bid?
We did.
And how'd it go?
We got one bid.
And how much was it?
Thirteen five for. Fifteen five, thirteen six each year for.
Um, did you award it, you gonna look over it?
We got our advisement, we want.
Makes sense.
And can I ask how it was advertised?
Alright. Um, Caitlin, please.
Advertised newspaper, NHMA.
How many, uh, how many, uh, did we go after?
Oh, also, sorry, sorry. It was also mailed out to NHMA's list.
That's what I was looking for, okay, thank you.
Okay, there was like seven?
Oh, no, there are like four, twelve or fourteen.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I want to talk, I did have three that the mailing address was not good. And was sent back, so I emailed and mailed, so those who didn't respond. So I did agree that came back and was bad addresses, but the rest.
So look at thirteen six a year. Including that year.
So you're just gonna take time and review it and then?
Yeah, I wanna actually rank them all, like.
And uh, they did provide a, what's up with pages there? Per hour.
The last, page thirty-four.
It's okay, I just, you got one bid, you're gonna look over it. Sounds like did everything, you couldn't find somebody that willing to take on after him. At some point, could we? Is there information available about? Publicly about. Why we're, why we are at, why, where we are, if that makes sense?
Um, I started the bids.
Why we, why we had to put it out, it's been, I don't know why I haven't talked.
Cause a couple, well, a couple of years ago. Um. You know, it was brought up at a town meeting that, you know, because of the fifteen thousand, we had to drop bids, so we took proactive. Put it up this year. I shouldn't wait until next year, but uh, we did put it up this year. And, uh. One bid, I, I, and the other question was Avatar, why you did not bid?
Is that, are we in a position to make that? Information publicly available, or do we have any concerns about? Breach of contract or litigation?
I think you can make that information public.
We had a contract. We had a contract, they sent us a note saying that they were done on, as of twelve thirty-one, based on the RFP going out the door.
Right.
But we had another year with them?
It was up for, they could, they could adjust their bids, we would have to read, uh, I mean, say.
We are trying to, we are.
I deal for that.
So we, we, no, we had a bid through next year, Melissa.
Through the end of twenty twenty-five?
Through the end of twenty twenty-five.
And they get the end of twenty twenty-four?
But the full revow? If we basically went with a company, we had just done a revow, go with a new company, they were gonna have to do their own complete revow?
No.
No?
The.
Okay.
The contract that we had for Avatar expired December thirty first of twenty twenty-five. In twenty twenty-five, it was part of the original bid for sixty something, you're gonna have to. Don't hold me to the number of sixty something thousand dollars for the townwide revow, that was to take place in year five of their contract twenty twenty-five. There's wording in there that states that they had to send a letter, which is. Boilerplate to inform DRA that they are our contracted. Company to perform the townwide revow. We put the RFP out, which included. The revow for twenty twenty-five. Because of that. And the Av- Avatar had the contract for the revow for next year. There was a thirty day um exit clause, and they exercised their right. Um. To exit the contract and not move the revow in twenty twenty-five, based on the fact that we decided mid-contract or. Having one year left to exit. You know, we put the RFP out and they decided to exit the contract, that basically the gist of it. But if the contract is right here, it does give the number for year five. I I. I, I, I'm sorry. The town right, the townwide revow would have been. It was sixteen thousand ninety two dollars for twenty one, two, three, four, and the townwide revow would have been seventy seven thousand seventy seven.
Which we've been putting away money for, right?
Mm-hmm.
In a truck or?
Every forward. Let me come to town maybe.
So.
There's that yellow.
They decided to exercise the thirty day out clause because we decided to put it out for bid for the, for year five? Are there any other mitigating circumstances why they decided to ex- execute their thirty day out?
What you described was in their letter and that was it.
Is there a letter of public information?
It has to be because it's a town record.
Thank you. Can I have a coffee and a letter?
And it's basically said they will continue uh. Assessing the needs through December thirty first, twenty twenty four. So, contract ends every day, but till the end of December. Um, I got two copies here for. I got a folder.
And the, that RSA that I was talking about. It's, so if you, I don't, did you have a chance to review that RSA? So when they started, when Department of Revenue. I believe this is Department of Revenue. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong. They are the enforcer of assessing statewide. So when you get into a townwide revow, they wanna know who your agent is, who you're contracted with each municipality. And it's, and it's a. Letter of notification to DRA stating we are the contracted person. DRA in turn. Basically does a check and balance. Yes, you are licensed, authorized, blah, 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 so on and so forth. That's what this verbiage is. Um. There is no obligation by any party to do an updated under this agreement. An update agreement detailing the specifics noted above. Must be signed under separate agreement as required by RSA twenty one dash J colon eleven. It will be forwarded for review to the signature. And for review and signature in the fall of twenty twenty four. So.
Twenty minute half the time.
We had to sign that letter to send off to DRA. Circumstances outside of Avatar's control such as changing law, DRA rules, assessing standards, board rules make up the town. Um scope of work required, which may alter this estimated cost.
So it's an estimated cost.
Yep.
Glad you got one bid.
We, and for the record, we did get a second. Letter from another company and that was saying that. We respectfully decline bidding on this. Thanks for considering us, basically. Just to know what.
Right. Oh, I got it. Lost my attention, but anymore. I wanna go to five minutes.
Oh. I will never come back to that.
Now, you're welcome anytime. Any more non-public comments? Only on Zoom. No more comments.
Do you have time for a non-public for reputation?
Good. Yeah, we do. Reputation. I don't have that RSA.
Same, same.
Hey.
Same. Oh, it's um. Arthur ninety one A.
So it's for one?
I don't know. I just grabbed, grabbed the whole key.
So we're gonna go on non-public RSA ninety one dash eight, colon three, comma two, A. Reputation.
Second.
Well, pepper.
Hi, Simon Dodge.
Thank you, everybody.